All meetings ordered. Start the legislative agenda.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call roll please.
Bedai.
Here.
Rossack.
Here.
Crouch.
Here.
Scarborough.
Here.
Mayor Lansford.
Here.
Do we have changes to the agenda?
Oh yeah, thank you. Under the Plan Commission receivable place on file item four, recommendation fifteen is going to be pulled. The Plan Commission took no action on the Oaks Lodge petition. And recommendation sixteen, there is no formal recommendation. All that was done at the Plan Commission was a motion to allow the change. We can discuss under the action item. And then related to that, items eight and nine on the agenda. Item eight will be pulled due to the fact that it did not come out of Plan Commission. And then item nine will be, resolution is not required, just a simple motion by the council. If you are allowing the change from the awnings to the murals, we'll talk about it in a moment. So those are the only changes.
Let me see if I get those correct now. So we're removing the agenda twenty eighteen dash fifteen under number four.
Correct.
And we are removing twenty eighteen dash forty-five, number eight.
Correct.
From the agenda. And changing twenty eighteen point forty-six, changing that from a resolution to a motion.
Correct. There was already a previous resolution authorizing the facade grant. It's just a motion to allow a change.
Okay. On the front page, it was also sixteen, twenty eighteen sixteen. Which one? Sixteen? Bottom one?
Yeah, recommendation twenty eighteen sixteen, again, same issue with the Plan Commission. A formal recommendation wasn't required. They just, they looked at the change and made a motion to approve.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the changes to the agenda? Is there any questions?
Scarborough.
Okay, any discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Bedai.
Aye.
Rossack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye. We'll move to public comment. Anyone who'd like to address the council for the three minute time limit, please step to the podium and state your name. If not, then we'll move to item number one.
Listen, I think you may, item one under Old Business is, if you remember at last month's meeting, there was a petition for the owner of nine twenty-one Laura to vacate the alley adjacent to the home there. The day of that meeting, we had a email come in and a call come in from a neighboring property owner questioning the need for it. I hadn't had a chance at the time to talk to that neighbor. I have since done so. Still weren't in support of closing the alley, but no real objection, except that they thought it shouldn't be. The alley still has never been approved. The city has no plans. So that recommendation is, if the council desires to go ahead and vacate that alley.
Does anybody want to check it out? You don't like it, do you? I mean, there's still access to it from the south. I mean, so.
Yeah. Mr. Gray.
I would know this was an alley.
Yeah, you wouldn't know.
All right. I'd entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance approving the vacation of a public right-of-way from north-south alley adjacent to Laura Avenue and Bizarre Streets in the city's street.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Bedai.
Aye.
Rossack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye. Item two.
Item two, again, at Old Business, if you remember from last month, there was a couple of changes made to the ordinance to reflect the street names, to note what the famous person from Twitter gave as opposed to just saying their name. So those are the changes that are in front of you and we discuss or approve the ordinance.
Yeah, I would ask to take comments on that since our last meeting. And there were eight that liked the idea of using the achievements and the name like we proposed. One wanted to do a former mayor and two wanted to do Glass Capital of the World, which we will consider in the future, but it was, nobody against it at all. Everyone was for it.
Counsel, any suggestions or changes to it other than what was presented? Have you had a chance to review it? Okay. I'd entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Streeter Municipal Code of Ordinances, chapter twelve, point four zero, to permit honorary street designation.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, call roll please.
Bedai.
Aye.
Rossack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye. Item three.
Item three, the discussion at some of your previous meetings about the policy for city parks, use of parks, and I think mainly the change to the policy regarding the pavilion, the phone pavilion. So you guys have discussed in the past, but if it's where you guys want it, then we'd recommend approval.
We've all had a chance to review it since the last meeting. So is there any other suggestions or comments?
I'm just looking at the application for it. And it says groups of twenty-five or more must provide proof of insurance. For that one, I guess, if it's a family reunion or that type of activity, I don't know if we should require insurance on it versus we can identify where you're inviting public. Just wanted to look at that a little more.
Yeah. We have not in the past required that. It's been an event of some kind, yes we have, but if it's by family or some type of party or whatever. But you know, there could be a fine line between some groups. You may not want in the park in a family reunion, you'd like to know who's there or I suppose. It should register, I would think. I don't really need proof of insurance.
Ultimately, the policy is administered by the administration staff. I think it's something that probably work out just administratively. But the permit's required regardless, so that way we do know who's in the park and we can get the facilities ready.
Is everybody okay? I don't want to come back. Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, give me a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Bedai.
Aye.
Rossack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye. Item four. Cheryl, do we need to do these separately?
Um, you know what? Let's just do it without the suspenders and let's do it separately. Let's do it without the suspenders and make them all separate.
Okay. All right. Okay. I'd entertain a motion to place on file the Plan Commission's recommendation twenty eighteen dash twelve. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Bedai.
Aye.
Rossack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye. I'd entertain a motion to place on file the Plan Commission's recommendation twenty eighteen dash thirteen.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Bedai.
Aye.
Rossack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye. I'd entertain a motion to place on file the Plan Commission's recommendation twenty eighteen dash fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Do you have additional discussion?
No, I don't need to. I have seven.
Yeah, number four is just a receivable place on file.
This is just a receivable place on file. Everybody okay? All right, clerk, call roll please.
Bedai.
Aye.
Rossack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
And if that is the last, those are the three recommendations from the Plan Commission.
Thank you.
Number five is, following the, at the Plan Commission meeting, the St. Michael School made a petition for a special use permit to replace their existing sign in the south of the building that is visible from Park Street. They'd like to replace that with an electronic message sign, but they would also like to be able to sell advertising on that sign. So the special use permit would allow for the sign to be electronic, like you've seen Curly's Sleep Shop and some of those other signs of that nature. It'll be that type of sign, but the special use permit recommended by the Plan Commission would allow them to sell advertising. So it would be about work. So that's what's in front of you tonight.
All right. I'd entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance approving the issuance of a special use permit to St. Michael School in conjunction with the installation of an electronic message board at four-ten South Park Street.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes, one second.
Now, is there any discussion?
Is there anything in our sign ordinance about, I guess, billboards, if you call it, advertising on?
They require a special use permit. In all cases, billboards require special use, which is, half of the reason they're here and the other half is that the electronic message sign faces a residential house, which is not allowed by the code. So the special use will take care of both of those issues.
Did the homeowner say anything to us?
Hadn't heard, didn't, did I hear from the homeowner? And clerk just reminded me that one of the conditions placed on it, on the recommendation, and agreed to by St. Michael School was that it would only operate from seven in the morning until ten at night, so that it will then shut off.
So it's not going to be running at night?
It's not going to be running at night. And that's a special condition, I think, again, that the Plan Commission recommended that you include the ordinance, and it is in that language.
Are we opening up other requests for signage that individuals can rent out?
A billboard, again, that's why billboards in the zoning code are by special use, so each one is a unique situation. So you won't get a chance to, if someone comes in, you'll have to look at it in each individual circumstance.
Commercial, or to the school?
Again, in this case, you know, it's along Route twenty-three, so that, you know, that makes sense for billboards. It's in a unique spot down in the residential area, but it is on a state route. So it would set a precedent that billboards are allowed on twenty-three, but they already are. The last one, billboard special use, I recall, is the large billboard at Taco Bell, right just around the Taco Bell, was issued by special use. And that's the only one in fourteen years that I've been here that's been issued besides this one at night, so.
I remember that there was one that was grandfathered in, that when the property sold, the special use was not to continue, but it has. It's on Park Street.
Oh, yes. Yeah, that was a, the changeable message sign.
Yes. I just remember that came up with the council.
And if I'm not mistaken, attorney can jump in here, that, you know, if you're concerned about setting a precedent and you wanted to put a sunset on this provision, just on the provision of the advertising, and, you know, five, ten years, whatever the case may be, and then if it became an issue, you could say, well, we sunset it and then it would go away. The sign doesn't have to come down, but the advertising could. But that's.
And then they'd come back for another.
They could come back again, I mean, that way you wouldn't be setting a precedent you couldn't get out of, I guess.
That's correct. I would agree.
The hour's concerning me, too. That's a little late, ten o'clock at night.
Ten o'clock.
I mean, eight o'clock, some, I mean, that's reasonable.
Any else?
Nine o'clock or something. Two is pretty long.
And if you'd like, if you would like to hold it over, I did, the principal, unfortunately, Mrs. Blumentzheim, did have a prior commitment tonight, and I said, you know, if there was discussion, we would ask, I would ask if you, we wanted to table it so she could be here. But if you want to proceed, that's your prerogative, too. But unfortunately, she had a school issue to deal with.
It's a pleasure of the council. I mean, would you like to look at us more, or you'd like to.
The change of times might be horrifying. I understand the purpose of it, and I understand the need for it. And school systems are, I remember what we can do to help, but I just, I would truly like, you know, at ten o'clock at night, I would not like to see me outside, flexing my, living in the window here, seven to nine, seven to eight, I mean, that's funny, but.
So do we want to table it and think about it?
Well, what you could do, if the time is the only issue, Mr. Scarborough made the motion, you could amend your motion to approve the ordinance as presented and amend the section instead of limiting the time.
And then if the school did have an issue with it, they could come back and talk to you later, but at least that would be, it would be approved and they could continue with the purchase of the sign if you wanted to.
I'm willing to amend the motion.
Setting it at nine o'clock?
At nine o'clock.
Is everybody okay with that?
Just need a second on that.
One second, okay. Second. So everybody's okay now? We're just at.
So it's going to be nine o'clock PM?
Not a sunset.
So that'll be the second issue, is whether or not you wanted to, on the advertising portion, say they could advertise for a period of five years and where you look at it again, or you could just leave it as is. That's prerogative of the council.
What happens if the, if the building comes down or something happens to the building?
Once the special, once the use ended, the permission granted hereby would end as well.
So if it's not there, then it ends.
As long as everyone's, has to come before, is it?
Every billboard has to come before the.
Okay. Okay. Do we have, can we get a touch in? Do we get a second from the other? Clerk, call roll please.
Bedai.
Aye.
Rossack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye. Item six.
Item six is the owner of twelve oh three North Watson has petitioned, she's operated a hair salon in a detached garage in the property for years, legal not conforming. At the time it was established, it was illegal use. So she would now like to convert that salon into an efficiency apartment for herself. As of right now, the special use permit would allow her to rent that property out or, or the house for that matter. She's talked about that as well. But at the Plan Commission, she stated that her goal is, she's getting older, she would like to move into that. The house has many levels and the efficiency would be on the first floor. So this special use permit was recommended by the Plan Commission and would allow her to convert the salon into a efficiency apartment.
Any type of remodeling or changes that there is, I'd have to have any type of city review and oversight and approval.
Yes, it'll still require building permit. Everything she does requires building permit.
I'd entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance approving the issuance of a special use permit to Judith A. Richardson, owner twelve oh three North Watson Street, to allow for the conversion of a legal non-conforming accessory apartment at twelve oh three North Watson Street.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Bedai.
Aye.
Rossack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye. Item seven.
Item seven is, petitioner is here tonight. The Plan Commission recommended this with one day dissenter for the special use, special use permit for seven oh two North Otter Creek. There's a dilapidated house on the property now. Petitioner, Mr. Peddlety, would like to demolish that house and be allowed to install a residential garage on the property. There was some discussion at the Plan Commission about limiting the size of the garage, but ultimately they did not, they did not add a stipulation to it, so, but there was discussion on it. So the only stipulation that they did have, and Mr. Peddlety agreed that's how he was going to proceed anyway, is that he would orient the garage on the lot so that a house could be built in the future. So again, it was recommended by the Plan Commission, so now it's up for you guys to decide. The special use is being sought because our code does not allow for a, or for a garage accessory structure without a house on the lot. So that's why he's seeking to see if that can be approved.
Okay, so there is the possibility then of future use of that lot, of building a house.
The garage will be oriented in such a way that it is possible to build a house on it.
And tearing down a dilapidated structure as current as there would be an improvement.
Just a technical correction to the ordinance. In paragraph two, or section two of the ordinance, it refers to a petition filed by Judith A. Richardson. Obviously, that's a typographical error. And the final ordinance, if it is approved by city council, will refer to the correct petitioner, Scott Peddlety.
I have, I have Scott Peddlety down, we're on number seven.
It's a.
The order that paper.
Just a typo on your.
It's a typo on the ordinance itself. So that, that technical correction would be made.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance approving the issuance of a special use permit to Scott Peddlety, owner seven oh two North Otter Creek Street, to allow for the demolition of an existing residential house and the construction of a new residential garage.
So moved.
Is there a second?
One, one second.
Is there any other discussion?
I'll be watching, because this is a black list.
How large of a garage were you putting up just for yourself?
Um, what I would like to build is something about twenty-eight feet by thirty-six feet, approximately what I would consider a three-car garage.
It's not a business of anything.
Oh, no, not, no, not. No, I, I have too many toys.
Okay. Well, the ordinance was put in place because of that at one time. People were buying old lots and putting up, I guess, non-conforming business in the residential area. And we had problems with them, that's why this ordinance.
No, not, no business, but it's a little out of.
And also, just for the minutes, the staff recommendation that, actually, staff in front of the Plan Commission took no position on the, on the recommendation, basically just stated the facts, but one of the facts stated was that it is on Otter Creek Street, so basically going into those, saying, the precedent would be set that it's a major street as opposed to some of the neighborhoods. It could be decided at the council later dates, but that was one of the issues the Plan Commission weighed.
Zoning is still residential.
Zoning is still residential, but it is on a high-volume street as opposed to a local street.
What Mr. Peddlety wants to do, the house is, needs to come down, and thank him for doing it. I think it's very positive. Any other comments?
I would just say, I'm only torn just because I don't want people popping up with a bunch of garages, but the house does need to come down. I'd rather Mr. Peddlety do that than the city end up taking it down eventually. My only question is, how close are you to it? I know you're not adjacent.
I have a block.
Like a block?
One block away.
Okay.
A block to the west.
Oh, I thought you were right next door.
No, it's not adjacent, that's the only, because if it's adjacent, you can combine the lines.
Hopefully, you'll build a house on it next.
I don't foresee myself building a house on it.
Any other comments? Clerk, call roll please.
Bedai.
Aye.
Rossack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye. Item eight, that has been withdrawn. Is there a agenda? Number nine?
So, number nine, correct. It's just, it's no longer a resolution, but just, we would ask that you would review the changes proposed by Mr. Schmidt, the owner of Don's Furniture. In their, in the original resolution, they were proposing a facade grant. They were going to put awnings on each of the second-floor windows. After the, the window murals that went in at Monroe Tap, Mr. Schmidt contacted the same artist and has the artwork, which you have in front of you, to, instead of putting in the second-floor awnings, they'd replace those with window murals. So he would like to change to that, and the Plan Commission made a motion recommending that change.
So what would the amount be?
The dollar amount for the facade grant does not change. It's just simply the look.
Our amount is up to fifteen thousand.
It's up to fifteen thousand, and, and all told, between the type of thing they've done, the sign work and this, they're, I think they're over twenty-five thousand dollars.
So we're changing.
Yeah, all we're doing is changing what we're allowing, but the, the cost does not change.
So he's not going to put awnings in, he's going to paint windows and he's going to put the mural on.
Yeah, there'll be the aluminum murals.
So the motion would be to alter the facade grant to permit murals in place of awnings?
Correct.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the recommendation from Plan Commission to grant permission to alter the facade grant award to Bill Schmidt, owner three eleven East Main Street, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, approved by the city council in October eighteen, two thousand and seventeen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Bedai.
Aye.
Rossack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye. Item ten.
Thank you all. Actually, I'll turn this over to, to Lucas, who's here.
We are just recommending, Eric and I have been working on a project with Frontier. We have an old phone system, it's been here ever since I've been here, so it's nineteen years old. We can no longer get parts for the voicemail system, and we are currently on two separate systems between the police department and upstairs. So this would also save us money each month on our bill. Upfront cost would be nineteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars, but the savings per year is going to be ten thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. So we're asking that you approve our recommendation to put in a new phone system for city office. And, and it's all, all the city buildings.
It's going to combine the city to one system on the cloud, basically it's voice over IP.
How old is the current system, did you say?
Twenty years.
About twenty years.
Twenty years.
Yeah.
Okay, so then the annual savings would be approximately thirteen thousand a year?
Well, part of that is going to change. We were going to switch our I-fiber internet charges to Frontier as well, but we found out that it's going to cost more to get that converted, so we're going to take that out. So the annual savings will be ten thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars, that's just for the phone system. And we're going to continue with I-fiber for the internet.
Okay, so approximately ten thousand a year savings, so about two-year payback.
Right.
Could be costly.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion, second, to approve and authorize the replacement and upgrade the city's telephone system for city hall departments.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is that just general plan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Clerk, call roll please.
Bedai.
Aye.
Rossack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye. Item eleven.
Item eleven, Mayor, is designated, designating additional handicap spots, four of them, throughout the downtown, with next year's upcoming project for the, to replicate the concept block throughout downtown with our I-T-F grant. And we had a couple of requests coming from some of the business owners. It was looked at holistically through downtown about where handicap spaces make sense. So the four additional spaces are, are being recommended tonight for approval. You'll have one at the northeast corner of Park and Main, one at the southwest corner of Vermillion and Main, one at the northeast corner of Vermillion and Main, and one at the northeast corner of Sterling and Main. So that will, those four additional spaces that will supplement the five that are already downtown, basically you'll have two in every block, is what we're trying to do.
I'd had a couple of calls come in from individual or property owners requesting handicap parking, and I asked, you know, that we would do, and look see over the entire downtown area rather than piecemeal it, and make the recommendations of where they should be placed. So this will be according to that downtown plan. be placed, so this will be according to that downtown plan.
Correct.
I'd entertain a motion to, and ordinance, adopt an ordinance to designate an additional four handicap parking spaces within the 200 to 500 block of East Main Street.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lansford?
Aye.
Item 12.
I think, item 12, Mayor, is, for the past several years, we've been applying for a, the abandoned properties grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority, and in the first three rounds, we've been lucky enough to receive funding, helps us recoup costs for the demolition of abandoned houses, so there's another round open, round four is open, and the application is due in the middle of December, so this will allow us to put in that grant and try to go and recoup the costs for what we tore down this year.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to support the application for an Illinois Housing Development Authority head grant in conjunction with the demolition of abandoned properties in the city's street.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lansford?
Aye.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the resolution to replace the timeframe report of a sexual allegation to the Illinois Department of Human Rights Council, and Crouch will abstain from section E, this, the sexual allegation, it's, they've made some recommendations, is it a minor change rate for the sexual?
It's a minor change, you used, previously, you would have 180 days to report and claim a sexual harassment to the Illinois Department of Human Rights, the law changed to make it 300 days, and so we need to make the same technical correction to the city's sexual harassment policy.
I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lansford?
Aye.
Want to, city official comments?
I just kind of wish everyone a happy holiday, with Thanksgiving coming next week, and invite people to the Keeping Christmas Close to Home activities on Saturday, the 24th, there'll be Light Up Streeter and the parade, and a lot of events on that, and then, I believe, also, December 7th is the Marion Main event with, for shopping downtown, so keep those on your calendars.
All I have is Happy Thanksgiving for everyone.
Right.
Yep, same here. Have an Happy Thanksgiving show.
And thank you all for coming tonight, it's good to see you, great, good crowd.
Happy holidays, I'd entertain a motion, first, um.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?